Hello and welcome to the Select Board's meeting of Wednesday, August 23rd at 5:00 PM. Please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Don't have any appointments? Is anybody here for open forum? No. We'll close open forum and we will go right into our action items.
Okay, um, I don't see it on here. I was just...
There's some here.
I got these ones here. I don't have that.
Yes, here.
Steal that from me. Very needy tonight, very needy.
So unprofessional.
Doesn't get any better.
All right. Action items, let's go. Discuss and possible vote on the appointment of Michael Jakins as the Chief of Police.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate your asking.
Can you give us your name, rank, serial number?
Michael Jenkins. I'm currently the acting chief of the department. I've been with the department since December of 97. My law enforcement experience goes back to 1989 where I was a seasonal officer in Dennis. Then I worked in the town of Abington for seven years and then I've been here ever since. So, it goes thirty-plus years of law enforcement experience. Came down to East Bridgewater almost thirty years ago. My... Built my home here, loved the community ever since. And my, my family raised my children, they're, they're townies and raised them in the community. And I love the community. Like I said, been here almost thirty years.
Great. Questions? David?
Mike, give us a synopsis of the last six months and what your projections might be, short and long term in the future if you're appointed.
Been pretty busy over the last six months. Obviously, I've been acting chief approximately six months. Just in, in that timeframe, obviously, I've assumed the chief's duties, the deputy chief's duties and currently at some admin assistant duties, which we're, you know, in the process of trying to fill that spot, which is one of my priorities. So, within the six months, I've had to maintain the budget for FY23, make sure, you know, we stayed on pace for, for the close of the year and all, be involved in all the department head and the meetings for FY24 and beyond. Post certification, you know, the post is the, the police reform that's come about. So, I've had to take over the roles and responsibilities of the post reform, which they just actually released yesterday, if, if anyone saw that on the news, where, you know, this is part of the reform, you can go out and look up officers, et cetera, for any discipline issues, et cetera. Fortunately, if you go out, and that's mainly, it's supposed to be for excessive force, et cetera. But, if, the good thing is, if you go out there, East Bridgewater's not on that list. So, that, that's a good thing, you know, for East Bridgewater. Also, you know, over the course of the last six months, we've written some grants and, and maintained the grants, which takes a lot of work. We've brought almost over $300,000 to the town, whether it be for body one cameras, the traffic grants, the 911 grants. So, you know, just to touch on that, you know, that saves the town a substantial amount of money for, for some of those things, like the traffic grant. I've been able to put out traffic enforcement from April. It'll go till September 15th and that's based on a traffic grant and that's for impaired driving, speeding, crosswalks, which is good because I can use, utilize that for, you know, going back to school to have extra traffic enforcement out there at certain times as well. So, and that's all funded through grants. Like I said, some of the budget stuff for FY25, had to attend the department head meetings, attending all the chief meetings, whether they be Southeast and Mass, Mass Chiefs of Police. And that's the network where we get up to speed on current laws, changing laws, trends, et cetera. So, I've had to attend all those meetings. We, what we recently did, we, we, thankfully through the town, you know, we were able to acquire $6,000, you know, that was appropriated. In addition to that, we got a little more money from our budget, but we did a thorough evidence and property audit of our department, where they do every single piece of property and evidence, whether it cash, drugs and money, which are the most important things. And we had a great evidence audit that came back through a private company, which is recommended anytime you go through a transition or a change of leadership. So, we were fortunate enough to get that done in, in June and we had a, a great report that I can follow up with you. I did give Charlie a copy if anyone wanted to see what that comprised of. But that came back great, so we're in good shape there. Obviously, being quite involved with the bicentennial events, coordinating, you know, a lot of the, you know, the incident command for the bicentennial events and making sure we had the proper coverage and coordinate it with all those involved with the, with the events. What I've been really doing is, obviously, we've been a really focused, and this has been an ongoing thing with prior chiefs and myself, focusing on accreditation and certification, which is huge for a department. In the last six months, we made more progress than we ever have. We're at 80%. What we'll be doing is, we'll be going for a mock assessment, hopefully by the end of next month. And then by the end of the fiscal year, we should be, we're hoping, we'll go for, probably in April, we'll go for our certification assessment and hopefully we'll be certified by the end of the year, which is, which is, it's, it's a great feather in the cap for any police department to become certified, with the next step being accreditation. You know, they look at that fondly on grants and everything else. So, Sergeant McLaughlin, he's been working quite, uh, he's been quite a big help with me on that. He's been my admin sergeant and my other sergeants have stepped up quite a bit to help me in a lot of these areas as well. Due to turnover, we've had to recently hire three new dispatches. That's one of our big concerns. We've had, you know, dispatches that have left and gone and come on, and so we've had to hire three new dispatches. Also, I've been actively participating in, with town council and with Charlie in contract negotiations with the dispatches and our patrol unions. We acquired, uh, I was able to finish up and get the acqui, the grants and the, the required money for Comfort Dog Morgan. So, we're able to get Comfort Dog Morgan, which has been really received quite well through the town and, and, you know, it, the DA's office was instrumental in helping us with that, with some grants. And we got some private funding and we did some things and we have some fundraisers going forward for that and for K-9 Thor. Who, K-9 Thor, within the last six months, has also been, uh, he went to a ten-week schooling on, uh, become drug certified, so he's got another feather in his cap, so he's drug certified. Thor can do a, a building search or a vehicle search, can't do a body or person search, but, and, and he's for every drug under the, you know, from A to Z, focusing on what the current, you know, the epidemics of fentanyl, et cetera, the opiates and some of the other ones. So, and Thor's already had a couple of successful detections with that new training. He's been a great asset to the department. And once again, we were, I was instrumental in helping bring in Thor to our department through, um, some great citizens in, in town and that also stepped up, Yankee Sprinkler and quite a few others in town. I could go on and on, but they've been instrumental in that. And to date, Thor has, or K-9 Morgan hasn't cost the town anything. It's all been through fundraisers, private donations, et cetera. And just to touch on the grants, like I said, we have the traffic grant, the 911 grant. A couple, um, we, we recently, a couple of my sergeants had showed some interest in grants, so I just had them write some recent grants. And one's a burn grant, a JAG grant, that, um, we, we just submitted for and hopefully, you know, if we get that, we'll be notified soon. And also, we submitted for traffic safety grant for the, for the next upcoming fiscal year as well, which, one good feedback is, and the reason why, through the body one camera grant, we've got the second most highest in the state is because the, the state likes the way we write our grants. We always report on time, they're thorough and, you know, some of these other big cities, they go through, you know, with the reporting, they, they go through a logistical nightmare. But, they've, you know, they said we work well with them, so it's fortunate when we write grants and get them and, and based on our past experiences and writing them. So, just some of my priorities coming up, obviously. One of the first things I would need is, I mean, we've been interviewing, we, we put out and, uh, we got the approval and we, we're pursuing an administrative assistant. We've kind of had a part-time person in there. It's a full-time job and then some. I've been picking up quite a bit of those responsibilities and a couple of my sergeants, like I said, have stepped up to help. So, our, our primary focus is that. We put out a, a job ad for that or, with the, it, the date ended on the 12th. We probably got over a hundred applications.
Wow.
We have, um, we interviewed five persons today and we'll be interviewing approximately another five to 10 over the next two days. We should hopefully have a conditional offer appointment for somebody by the end of next week. I'd like to see them start by the end of September, if possible. September 25th timeframe is what we're looking at, so we can get them in there, get them trained and, and go from there. Also recently, it just came up and this is something that, you know, I think, obviously, this is more a forecast and going in the future, but through the approval and the, and thank, I'm grateful to the board, but to, to start to put together a, um, a public safety building committee. I know it's the infancy stages, but one thing is, I mean, we, we, our facility is, we've outgrown it quite a bit. We've been down there a long time, there's some issues, but they've always been addressed. But, it, we've far outgrown it, even when it comes to parking. I mean, shift change, we can't find parking. I mean, and town halls sure experienced the same thing. So, we'll be putting together like a, a, a building committee, um, which will involve probably, um, we're going to have residents involved as well as people from different, whether it be the DPW, police or fire, um, ranks that will be involved as well. And obviously, myself, the, the fire chief and, uh, John Haines would be there to consult in any needs in regards to, you know, that, that aspect of it. And one thing I'd, you know, one of my first action items would be to make a, whether it be an acting deputy chief or a deputy chief, because obviously, based on what we just went through, um, we were able to seamlessly, the department has run smooth for the last six months. The chief went out on medical leave and we haven't skipped a beat. I mean, and thankfully, we, we brought in a deputy chief position approximately five, six years ago, and that's obviously to, to assist the chief and, and take over his responsibilities in his absence and also to, to learn the job, learn the budget and, and run the operations. And, and I, and I, I could attribute our smooth transition over the last big six months is me being able to become deputy chief three years ago and working closely with the chief. So, a second in command is, is very vital to, to, you know, the structure of a police department. So, that, those are pretty much my priorities and those are just some of the things we've had to deal with in the last six months.
What do you do in your spare time?
Yeah, right.
That's, that's great. Uh, we, we talk every week and, you know, watching everything going. Like you said, it was a, a very smooth transition, which, again, unexpected, but, uh, you know, everyone down there seems to rise to the occasion.
We were prepared. I mean, in the sense of having a deputy chief, it was, it was huge, because, you know, I got to, you know, I got to be under the direction of the prior chief and then the current, you know, the chief, the, you know, the last two or three chiefs, so having a deputy chief is huge.
Anything else? Peter?
Yeah, um, I, look, I don't have a lot of questions as far as the, the job goes. We knew, you know, coming in, having sat in the role as deputy chief, that you'd be able to come in and do what you've done so far. I guess the only question I'd have for you now is, having sat there now for six months and seeing it from the seat you're in now, would you, what do you think is going to be your, your biggest challenge going forward? I mean, is there one thing that you think, you know, knowing where the department is? It's a young department, right, for sure? So, I mean, I, I, I think from just my perspective, it would be like, what is it that, you know, you think is going to be, you know, the hottest transition to, uh, to the job and to the seat that you have right now? Is there something that, I mean, maybe there isn't, but is there something that sticks out to you where, you know, you've got to, uh, really work on, on something that you think needs to be corrected? And it's not from the past chief or anybody else, just, you're just in general?
Um, I mean, the, the prior chief and I work closely together, but my, my philosophy is a little different in the sense that my, you know, when you ask what I do in my spare time, I mean, I was heavily involved in the community the whole time I was here, whether it be baseball, football, charitable events, et cetera. And, and my, my boys, you know, they, they played college sports, et cetera, like that and, and sports. And what I'm getting at is, I've always, I've always worked well with a team atmosphere. My goal is, you're only good as a team you, you surround yourself with. It's impossible for any one person to be, you know, in charge. It's who you surround yourself with. We already got a great team in place that, that are very smart, educated, and like I said, I, if, if it wasn't for, you know, a few of my admin sergeants that stepped up over the last six months, we, you know, it might not have been as smooth. So, I, I focus on, you know, keeping morale up, maintaining morale, building morale, um, and, and just building the team atmosphere. I mean, there's some little things you can do to build that morale I've already done in the last few months. The town may have noticed it, but, you know, one thing that a lot of, you know, the old paramilitary of, you know, no facial hair, a lot of departments across the nation, across the state, across the general area have, have allowed facial hair, beards. I mean, years ago, it'd be unheard of and old-school chiefs wouldn't allow that, but little simple things like that. I, I reached out, I have chiefs I know all over the country. One of my best friends was the Chief of Police in DC. I grew up with him since he was 12 years old. He did the same thing. He's, the major cities are doing it. If you read up on it, simple things like that can, can change morale. It's a step, it's one thing, but, you know, I'm sure that newness wears off, but certain little things, I, I think morale's huge. And, and everyone knows, you know, the, the state we're in right now, I mean, it's a, it's a tough profession right now. And, 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 you know, I want to make people more aware of what these guys really go through and see on a day-to-day basis. They do see a lot, they do a lot, and everyone that does that job, they do it because they care and, and, you know, you know, we all have our moods, we all have our days, but my main thing is to keep everybody as happy as possible, which, you know, we all know that's not easy, but morale and just focus on team atmosphere and, and, and educate more and get as much training for them as possible and make it the best, you know, trained, professional police force in the area for our size.
Thank you.
And one of the things that can help that a lot would be getting these damn contracts done.
Exactly. I mean, that, that would, uh, that would be very helpful and I, I agree with that a hundredth of the same.
Great. I don't have any questions per se, because you've pretty much already addressed everything and you and I have talked. My only advice to you is, yes, that morale is key and working on the training in the department, which I think you've got a great handle on. As a compliment to you, I ran into someone last night who told me about, uh, suicide prevention work that she had just done with the department and how great it went. And, you know, how, how good she felt about your officers being prepared to handle and walk into those situations. So, you know, it's, it's nice to hear that from someone unprovoked, just, I said where I lived and she told me about that. So, that was, you know, good.
Sadly, that's one thing that we've seen a, a lot more of. It's gone up and ever since the pandemic and, and, you know, my offices have seen quite a bit of that. So, I mean, and that's the thing with this profession, it's changed. I got on years ago, you know, you're given a gun and a, and a badge and a...
Get a bad guy.
...at a billy club and go drive the streets. And now, I mean, it's so, I mean, we're, now we are, you know, we're counselors, we, you know, we're there to help and, we're, we're nurses, we're doctors, we're counselors and we, and it's a tough job. And the officers out there wear many hats. So, the good thing is, I try and look for as much training as possible that will diversify them, so, you know, they, you know, because the job, in some ways, you do become desensitized. So, some of these trainings that you go, it opens up your eyes, because I've gone to the trainings and being old-school, you see them like, wow, you look at things at different perspectives. So, you know, law enforcement is definitely 21st century heading in that direction and you have to think outside the box with the overdoses, the mental health and, and all the things they come across on a daily basis.
Yeah. Nope, I encourage you to keep those lines of communication open with all of us. We're here to support you and help you do the best job that, you know, that you can do for the department.
And since I've been here, you guys have been phenomenal. I mean, that makes a big difference. It really does, you know what I mean? Because, you know, it's, it's not easy and sometimes you, everyone has a different perspective of thing and you can look at things a different way and that's, that's what it's all about. More heads are better than one, in my opinion.
Yeah. Charlie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
It's been great working with Michael for the last several months. We get to bounce ideas off each other. We visit each other up or down, doesn't matter. We're in the same building, we're on both working for the town, so I'm welcoming his appointment if the board chooses to make it.
Great. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a, a motion to appoint Michael Jakins as the Police Chief for the Town of East Bridgewater.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Other than you...
Do we need a date or on that?
I should have a date. My recommendation should be June 30th of 2026. That would, it, obviously, it's not a full three years, but working with the fiscal year makes it easier in terms of future contracts and budgeting and such.
Yeah, so what, effective today through June 20, yeah, June 30th, 2026? Oh, yeah.
A contingent upon...
Based on contingent on a...
Negotiation.
Correct.
Negotiations for a contract, yes.
As stated.
Okay. So, with that date?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Very much.
Thank you, chief.
Welcome.
I can't thank you enough.
Forward to working with you officially, as the official, official chief.
I'm on it. It's a good time, I really am.
We have great faith in you.
Congratulations. Um, and at some point, once we get this done, we should have a course of swearing-in ceremony.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That whole big family of yours.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The only thing I wish is, I wish my mom and dad were still around to see it, but, you know. My mom saw me make deputy chief.
They're always with you.
I just got goosebumps. Because, yeah, I get some heads all the time.
Absolutely.
But, thank you, once you're here. I appreciate it.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Chief State, chief.
Do I have to call you chief now, not Mike?
Could you stay for the...
I like Mike, I like Mike.
Could you just, uh, stay put for the next discussion we're going to have on Suicide Month?
I'm sorry?
He wants you to stay for, um, we're going to talk about proclamation of September.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, fine. Discuss and possible vote on proclamation of September as International Suicide Prevention Month and September 10th as International Suicide Prevention Day.
What I'm looking at, chief, is you and your people go through this all the time.
Might be your pact.
On suicide.
Email it out.
Do we have any type of numbers that we've been looking at over the last year or so? Not just East Bridgewater, but in the surrounding...
Oh, yeah, definitely. I can get you those. I can, I, I know we have numbers and I just, I know it's on the increase, I hate to say it, but, I can, I can put together some numbers, whether, you know, specifically in the region.
Yep.
Just so the public knows why these proclamations are so important.
Oh, this is the lady I met last night.
Why a specific day is so important.
Yep.
When you're talking to them.
I know.
So, we can get that out to the people.
So, the month is September?
Yep.
And then September 10th?
September 10th would be International Suicide Prevention Day.
Great.
Maybe we should plan on having some kind of, you know, town discussion that day.
I think it'd be great. I mean, because...
Then you can, you know, maybe bring in some people, you know, get some numbers for the, just for the town to see.
But it's a whole month, so you could have it in different...
Yeah, you could do it in...
This, this letter that I have here from the Plymouth County, from this Jenny Babcock, that's who I met last night.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, good.
I didn't realize that that's who it was from. I would have told her we'd be talking about it tonight.
And I received some other items on suicide prevention today, actually.
Okay, good.
So, cool. It's a subject that I'm very passionate about.
Yep. And they have those, um, signs, the ones that say, "You matter, your life matters." That is through this group as well.
Great.
So, maybe we can encourage people to put those signs out, because you never know what it will take to make a difference for somebody.
And I'll touch base on connecting on that with those. Okay, great.
All right. Thanks, chief.
Awesome. Great. Thank you so much.
Well, I'll make that a motion. For the proclamation of September as International Suicide Prevention Month and September 10th as International Suicide Prevention Day.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll see.
Have a great evening.
You too. Discussion possible on designating the driveway for the junior senior high school campus as Viking Way.
This is a discussion that's not a motion yet, so...
Okay. Discuss. We do have, Charlie, maybe you can explain what you've told me.
So, school superintendent had contacted the board last week about the possibility of naming the driveway. It is not a street, it's not a accepted road or anything like, but the driveway connects the campus on both sides, from Bedford Street and from Plymouth Street, as Viking Way. It would not be an official address of, it would still be 143 Plymouth Street. As part of that, you know, in talking to the chiefs and talking to the DPW director, if they want to put a sign up, it needs to be a different sign than we would normally use for street names and such. In addition, what was recommended is that for deliveries or emergency aid or anything, that a different sign be placed at either end that specifically says it's 143 Plymouth Street, so that we have, whether it's a delivery driver or somebody else who's trying to find and they, for some reason, decide, while the big junior senior high school sign isn't the, isn't enough, and want to see a sign that says 143, they need to put that up also.
Okay. Great. Yeah, look, I know, I don't have any issue with that, you know? Viking Way, Viking Path, Viking, whatever.
Yeah, Paul, I'll second his motion.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I think the idea as a ceremonial naming is fine and as long as it's clear that that's what it is and it's not changing the street address, then I see no issue with it, so. All right, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss and possible vote on naming the crosswalk at the middle, excuse me, Mitchell Middle School after Paul Helenan and authorizing the installation of a sign or a place card at this location stating the same.
You have a letter from his son about this. I, he had worked as a school crossing guard for all three schools at various times, I guess, in possibly other capacities for the town, council and agent and other departments. One idea that came up was to, in fact, not rename or not name the crosswalk, but to, in fact, put a plaque up or some sort of, um, sign at that location. Or if we feel that it's more attached to the police department as a crossing guard, is put a similar type of sign, only in one place, but put it down at the police department headquarters downstairs.
Yeah, that crossing composition's one of those gray areas. It's a part of the school and they put it in a revolving account, I think, every year, but the actual timesheets and the checks get produced out of the police department.
Yep.
So, it's probably if we're going to do a, I'm not too sure how a, a cross, I've never heard of a crosswalk type deal before, but I think where he was so involved, especially at the middle school where his, um, compound, as they put it in the letter, joins that, but maybe have a plaque in both, both places. You know, we're both, you know, just in recognition of your service to, as a crosswalk at the all schools and the Town of East Bridgewater.
Yep. Yeah, Paul's been around a long time. I think everybody understands what he's done for, uh, the community and, and firefighter and everything else, so I'm, I'm fine with it.
Plaque. Plaque.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the crosswalk thing could be a slippery slope for us, and I think we need to be mindful of that. But certainly to recognize him for the service that he's done with a plaque of some sort. So, we'll look to you, Charlie, to get back to us with more decisions on that. Great.
Discuss and possible vote on the contract for fiscal years 2023 to 2025 with the East Bridgewater Professional Firefighters Association.
This is the same, so what had happened was, we had a tentative agreement, which the board signed back in the spring before town meeting. There was a section of it that we were still negotiating with the firefighters. That section, that discussion has ended, and we've resolved it in the sense that that area will not be changed in the contract regarding leave benefits. As a result, we're back to where we are. And what the board should do, if it wishes to tonight, is vote again to prove it as is now. It's in the meeting packets. We do have the money to fund this the year we're in now. We will, because we went from one fiscal year to the next, have to revote the money at the town meeting in October for the retro pay for last year. We had Melanie, Megan, and myself been talking to the Division of Local Services. There was a number of issues, but that issue came up, and they said, once we had June 30th without an actual signed agreement by both parties, the money went into free cash. We're going to take it out of free cash again in October, and it will be used for retro payment for the firefighters for fiscal 2023. If you wanted to discuss, if there's a reason for going to executive session, John Clifford's here. I don't know whether you would feel it necessary to do that, and then whether it's tonight or at the board's regular meeting on the 11th, the board could then take an official vote.
I think we should make a motion to sign it as is. The same one that we approved prior to town meeting. We don't have to extend this any further.
I agree.
Yeah, it's been.
Coming in.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I'll make a motion as stated.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's get it done.
Yeah, get it over.
Thank you to everyone involved in this over the last.
Been a long.
Seven or eight years.
Curfuffle.
Tried to get this together.
Should we start the next one now?
Yeah, probably.
I thought we did that last time.
Right. Approve the request from Ryan Layton of the Cub Scout PAC 28 for the use of Town Common on Saturday, September 9, 2023, for the Cub Scout recruiting day from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and to put out signs on the municipal property for 10 days prior to the event.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I could just add on to that, as a part of the bicentennial, there'll be a scout jamboree down at the community center from September 29th in the evening. And then they'll have an open house and dedications on September 30th. I think it's from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. Then that will be followed by the Rockton Symphony Orchestra playing at the high school. I just wanted to get that all in.
Excellent.
All right, I've got two additional. I'm going to add those.
We need to vote it.
Oh, we voted, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. So, we got two additional, so I'll move over to these.
And then we'll go to executive.
Yep. Approve the request for one-day liquor license event permit for the commercial club for the Run for Jess on September 2nd, 2023, pending approvals from the police chief and fire chief.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope. It's 10 years for them. This is it.
This is the 10th year.
This is the last one?
Last one, yes.
Okay.
Thurston Family's done.
Yeah.
Really good job, and all the money goes to breast cancer awareness.
I can't believe it's been 10 years.
I know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the request for one-day liquor license event permit for the commercial club to benefit the Sidney Craven Memorial Fund on September 23rd, 2023, pending approvals from the police chief and fire chief.
Second.
Any discussion?
And I think this is the seventh year for a.
Is it?
Two-two run.
Are you going to be there in your two-two?
It depends on how much money they give me this year. It's a great, great cause every year.
It is. It is a great event, great event. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Before we do anything, Charlie?
Nothing else. We have executive with John. We may be coming out. We'll go in to my office. I don't know where we're going to be back out or not exactly.
Yep.
It shouldn't be terribly long. It's not like.
Yeah. It won't be long, one way or the other.
All I have is a letter for the, one of the chairman of the bicentennial committee. The parade committee is looking for a ton of cash. So, that's something for you to read in your spare time and to.
The Christmas parade?
Yeah. Yeah, they want a train. I think the train's probably the, what's the one where the, on the Christmas story? What's the name of that?
The Polar Express?
That's what I think they're trying to buy.
Well, that costs a lot of money.
I'm just kidding, but I mean.
Oh, okay, because there is, like, you can actually.
Mr. Clerk?
I read.
They're talking about.
It says, "Hi, Peter."
The train's going to carry this elecman?
I didn't read all of it. No, I just saw, I said.
That feels a little self-serving.
We'll file that.
All right.
For future reference.
My job was to pass it along, and I've done my job.
You have passed it along.
Yes.
Okay. Want to take us into executive?
Vote to close the open meeting, enter executive session, not return to.
Well, in May.
May return to open session pursuant to national law, Chapter 38, Section 21, A2, to conduct sessions in preparation for negotiations and conducting collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations if an open meeting may be, have to be general effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares with firefighters, superior officers, clerical, DPW, dispatches, patrol officers, police chief, deputy police chief.
And you're declaring this, right? You're declaring that it might be, that it would have a detrimental effect.
Yes, it may, for sure.
Aye. Peter Spigot Jr., what am I, clerk?
David Cheese, Vice Chair.
Aye, Carol Julia's chair. Okay. Okay, and we're back with a continuation of the April, August 23rd, 2023 Select Board Meeting. Mr. Clerk, you have a motion for the board.
I do. I make a motion to vote to approve the amendment to Chief Paul O'Brien's contract as provided to us by town council.
Second on the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Second night.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Grayson.
Have a great Labor Day.